Good evening. Welcome to the January 10th, 2023, meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Information on how to join school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Before I begin, community comments, is there anyone either here in the audience or on the Zoom who would like to make a community comment? We will hear from the school committee as a, from the school student council as one of our agenda items. Okay. In that case, I will not read the preamble about community comments. Thank you. We can move on to the first item on our agenda, which is some proposals from our student, high school student council. I'm very excited to see you here today, all of you, and I'm wondering if it would be possible just for you guys who are here as part of the student council to introduce yourselves? Would you mind?
Carol Spazano, one of the advisors for student council.
I'm Charlie Bun. I'm a freshman student representative.
Thank you.
I'm Connor Murphy. I'm a senior and president of student council.
I'm Nico Ben. I'm the vice president of the senior class.
I'm Ben Schroeder. I'm the president of the senior class.
I'm Devin DeFro. I'm a sophomore representative.
I'm Maz Olvi, the sophomore student office of president.
I'm Antonio Sires. I'm the junior class president.
I'm Oliver Henry. I'm a junior classroom president.
I'm Aaron Burke and I'm the junior class representative.
I'm Alison Sham and I'm a freshman representative.
I'm Martha Farion. I'm the student council treasurer.
I'm Amy Chan. I was senior student council representative.
I'm Shriya Lari and I'm the secretary of the student council.
I'm Mala Thurman. I'm a sophomore representative.
I'm Ella Marie Lee. I'm a sophomore representative.
I'm Jason Sear. I'm a freshman next year.
Thanks. Well, thank you all for taking time out of what I know is a really busy schedule for coming to meet with us tonight. I understand you have a couple of proposals that you would like to have us consider. And so without further ado, I think, is it Connor that's going to speak for you?
Yeah. First, Charlie is just going to give an update on the council work so far this year.
Absolutely.
So I think the biggest thing that we did in November was host a spirit week, and I think it was the first, like, full spirit week we've had since before the start of a pandemic. Overall, I think it was good. We raised, I think, about $2,000 for the Matt Brown Foundation. We were able to recognize our fall sports teams, which I think performed pretty outstandingly this season, and I just think it was a good school participation. Next semester, we are looking forward to hosting the blood drive, the April antics, and the teacher appreciation. And now we are holding town meetings where we gather each grade and give them a voice so they can have a say in what happens at the school. Is that okay?
And so as you said, we have two proposals that I want to bring forward today, and both of them are actually, came from town meetings that we had in the past that we just lost that. So our first request is, in first priority, is creating a dedication to Owen Bingham, an initiative that the student council started pursuing last year. It was asked to return with this year. The student council is proposing a dedication of the athletic stance of Owen because his legacy is intrinsically tied to Dover Sherburne Athletics. Owen was captain of the golf team when they won the state championship, ran track, supported his teammates and classmates by commenting on games and cheering in the stands. Owen represented what it means to be a Dover Sherburne student athlete, and as a result, he impacted students throughout the school. This dedication will ensure that his memory is forever remembered by Dover Sherburne athletes and the community at large. The council believes that it is important for this dedication to be made in a timely manner. We have also been told by the school committee and other people in the community that you're looking to create ADA compliant bleachers, which we are really happy about. However, we've also been made aware that because these bleachers are being replaced that it might take longer for a bleacher dedication to be made, and as a result, we would be interested in looking at alternative ways to commemorate Owen before the bleachers are ready. Our second proposal is-
Can we just pause on that one and we'll just discuss for a little bit? So this is not an action required item, so that means we're not going to vote on it tonight, but I do want to just have a chance for if school committee members want to offer any feedback or just have any sort of things to say as you guys go forward. And so I'll start. I think that it is, personally, I support your idea, and I think that it also might be helpful for us as we look for different kinds of sources for fundraising to get the bleacher project done sooner than later, because, you know, I know that there is a time concern with the, you know, there are kids today that would like to access and be fans and participate that aren't able to because our bleachers aren't compliant. So I think, you know, with the energy that your group brings to that issue, might be a good way for us to sort of, do what we can to, as expeditiously as possible, make that change.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm also a representative on the boosters board, so that's something we've been looking at as well. And I know that last year, my brother was the vice, or the president last year, and his friend Liza Birmingham was president of the senior class, so they had had some money set aside that they were thinking about using for dedication to Owen, so I could see if they'd be willing to use that for the bleachers.
Sure. Do other members of the committee have thoughts or feedback?
I have questions for the committee. What are the logistics of a dedication?
We don't have a specific policy with regard to dedicating in general. You know, past practice has been a very sort of minimal amount of named items in schools. For example, with Nora Surle, it's the field that's named after her, not like the entire stadium. So their request about having the fan zone sort of would be in line with that in that it's a specific part of the bleachers that is dedicated towards having, you know, the students participate, and that would fall generally in line. I think we did a little research on policies around naming, and there was always a desire historically not to have a specific one, just because they wanted school committees and administration to have some leeway in what they decided going forward.
If it was a brand-new school or a brand-new pool or facility, there is a policy for that, but in terms of existing structures, there isn't any specific guidance.
And so the financial restrictions are around getting the bleachers-
Around it being a capital item.
Okay.
And getting, you know, our budgeting process so that we, you know, can get the, you know, the cost of the ADA bleachers.
Okay. And I'm assuming, you know, just that it's not that we are not ADA compliant, it's that somehow we are grandfathered, because if we're not ADA compliant, then it is a number one capital budget.
So I can say an ADA accessibility because we are grandfathered in, so.
Yeah, but, you know, but it doesn't change the, right? I mean, but from a legal-
Exactly. From a legal perspective, we're in compliance in the sense that the bleachers are grandfathered in. From a, you guys have students at the high school right now who can't be fans with all the rest of their classmates because they can't access the bleachers. In a practical sense, we're not, and that's, you know, that's an issue in the sense that we're wanting to be inclusive and equitable, and it's hard when we have to tell some students they have to watch the game from somewhere else.
Where do they watch the game from right now? Sorry.
I think they can get to one part of, like, the beginning. Is there any part of the bleachers? No. Oh, yes. Can you just say your name and who you are?
I'm Caroline Harvey. I'm also, I'm a vice president of the student council, and I have a brother who is in a wheelchair, and he usually watches from the other side of the fan zone, like, over a fence. So he can't really, like, watch me play, which can sometimes be tough.
Yeah. I would say all the time that would be tough. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Any other feedback?
So my thing is, so we're going to make it a capital item is what we're going for to try to get accessibility for bleachers? Yes? For the, okay. And in the meantime, because I understand it's important, it was important for last year's class and this year's class to have this dedicated in a timely manner. So is there any way that we can go ahead and do a dedication and then rededica, I mean, because I think it's important for these-
Right.
We're trying to see what the timeframe would be. We're actually looking at this in a grander, overall picture than just the bleachers, because if you, if we start talking about our capital plan, you'll see that the turf and the track, the whole thing is coming up.
Right.
And so we are going out and looking for people who will give us proposals for the whole complex, and stipulating, though, that we're looking for sort of a rush job on the bleachers.
Okay.
But I think we're going to, we're going to get more traction in that we would present a larger project to someone to sort of come and step in and help us. And so we have a couple of feelers out now who are just waiting to set up some site visits.
Yeah. I was going to say, that said, I think, you know, in terms of being time-sensitive and wanting to honor Owen sooner rather than later, it's easier to create the plaque and have the plaque ready and framed, and then once the bleachers are ready, which is hopefully going to be, as you said, sooner than the turf and everything else that comes with it, we could then, of course, relay the plaque to the bleachers.
And I would be comfortable with that, but I don't want the fast-tracking of the plaque to in any way not emphasize, like, I think some of our collective feelings around urgency of, you know, I mean, you know, as Caroline mentioned, you know, her brother's a freshman this year. I don't want it to be his senior year that we make it so that he can access the bleachers. That feels really bad.
Right.
And like, just not like the right thing to do.
And again, what's the issue with not, I mean, from a timing perspective on the dedication, what is the downside of doing a dedication on bleachers that we know we're going to renovate later? What's the downside of it?
Well, just, I don't want, part of it, well, it's just, and it could just be a me thing, so I don't, like, I just, I think that part of the spirit of recognizing Owen with this thing is the spirit of including more people and being inclusive, and I feel a little bit weird about saying, like, here, we recognize it, and it will be inclusive in the undetermined future. But, but there's no reason why we can't. I just-
How are they connected, the two? There's a, this may be the stupidest question on the-
No, I don't know that they specifically are connected.
How is the dedication connected to the upgrading of the bleachers?
I don't know that they're specifically connected.
We need to upgrade the bleachers sooner rather than later.
Right.
We also need to do something with the turf field in the next few years. So it's a matter of, let's get the bleachers done. Do we want to name the bleachers that currently exist and are in pretty rough shape, or do we want to have the plaque ready for the new bleachers?
Yeah.
Like, if there's a timing issue, couldn't we do both?
That's what I was-
Like, couldn't we just move the plaque to the new bleachers?
Yes. Yes. I think it's, yes.
Just wanted, for people who are here before you, because if it's not going to be accomplished until they go away from us, you know, from this year, I just want to, you know-
Right.
If they've gotten the momentum going, I don't want to just say, ah.
Absolutely.
When you come back.
Is there any reasonable timeframe that sees ADA compliant bleachers by the end of the school year?
That is an unknown that I can't really answer.
Okay.
But I think that, again, with a package deal of getting someone who knows there's more work coming, I think we have a little more flexi, we have a little more traction to ask for something to be done sooner rather than later.
All right. Because I know we have had offers from boosters and probably some other outside groups. If it's a funding issue, that we probably could solicit some donations.
Right. We need to know what the costs really are.
Okay.
And we want to do it right, and I think that's the biggest thing, right? We don't want to do a rush job. We are having someone give us a quote on incorporating the press box into the bleachers, which is not how it is right now. So I think we're trying to expedite, but also making sure we do something that's going to be long-lasting and it's going to benefit, you know, down the road versus trying to do a quick fix. So that's, that's what we're playing with right now. So we will, you know, by the start of lacrosse season, hopefully we'll have much better information and know what direction we're taking.
Right now, speaking to your third consultant, it's, it's been a process-
Well, we started with just the bleachers, and we rarely were not getting good answers on just looking at the bleachers. So we've decided to expand it to a larger project, looking to see if we can get more interest in it.
What, did anything ever come of talking to the people who did Westwood's and, like, Medways and the other bleachers that are ADA?
I have a lead. Westwood actually was a combination project with someone, so, but I think I have a good lead right now.
Okay. All right. Yes.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming here. I think it's democracy in action. I think it's really fantastic, and I think, I actually think it would be important, even if we have to do sort of a dedication and a rededication, because it's important to acknowledge that a process can make something happen, and I think that's a really good sort of teaching moment, so.
Okay. So, yes.
Can I say that? I just, and I echo everybody. It's so great to see all of you here, and I know that Henry came before us last year, which was great, and I know you've been in communication with Mrs. Bingham, and I would just ask, I know she really wants to be involved in this, so please keep her involved, and if there's any way that I can help with that, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
All right. So as I mentioned, this is not an action item, but I think you can see from our comments that we are, you know, philosophically very much aligned with what you want to do. It definitely seems like an issue where getting sort of a good coalition of different organizations that might want to help, and, you know, money can always expedite things, but, you know, in terms of if, if there's organizations that want to make donations, that would be maybe something that Mrs. Potter might be able to be a good liaison for you in terms of timeframe, so that it does, you know, the recognition happens when you guys are all in school. I definitely agree with that, and the work happens so that the kids who need opportunity to access can do that in an expeditious fashion as well.
Awesome.
All right. So, next issue. Yes.
So, as I said, both of the issues that we're presenting came from town meetings, so this one gets brought up consistently pretty much every year, and it's the reduction of the student parking fee. And the student council reviewed 17 comparable districts last year to see what their parking fees were like, and we found that our $300 fee is higher than all of the other districts that we studied, and that it was over six times greater than the median fee. In a survey that we sent out to all the juniors and seniors in the school, 94% said that they believed that the fee should be reduced. Additionally, 55% of respondents reported that they drive to school because their parents are unable to drive them because of work or other commitments, and 63% drive to school because they participate in after-school activities, and obviously, you can't really take a bus home from most after-school activities, like sports and some clubs. So also, students participating in after-school activities are already paying activity fees, club-specific fees, and sports fees, athletic fees. And the student council believes that if the parking fee is to remain, which we understand, that it should not exceed the amount of money that is necessary to maintain the parking lot. In meetings with Mr. Smith and Ms. McCoy, we found out that the parking fee goes into the general budget, and consequently, many students are paying the parking fee themselves, which means that they're funding part of the general budget, although it's a very small amount, obviously. We think that the general budget and all the money that's sort of going to things other than parking should be paid by taxpayers, not students. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Do members have questions or comments?
Quick comment. Thank you for the graphic. I think it's nice to get a sense on what other towns are charging students as well, and I understand that perspective of thinking that the fees should go towards the maintenance of driveways. Do you know what the fees are for maintaining the lot, and I don't know if any security guards are needed to help with student traffic flow or not, but-
No, I'll let you try. No, there is no, there is traffic, but it's really to sort of, the paving that we do. So it's not like that it's annual, it's $50,000. That's what's been built into the budget to cover, to build your guys' budget. Anything that we collect, just so you know, over that $51,000 does go into the building rental fund, and we've had some years where that happens, and that's where you can put more capital aspects into the building fund for the parking lot, when we have to do more of the capital repairs. This has been built in. It's just part of the operating budget for current needs. We do pay to have the parking lot plowed, lined every year, so there are just incidental expenses, and cameras will be going in potentially to cover some of that cost of the landscape that we have sort of dedicated to parking.
Other questions? When you did your analysis of comparable districts, did you also check on which districts and what their fees are for kids taking the bus?
So we didn't, but we were under the impression that most, or a lot of non-regional school districts do that, and in our analysis, we did include other regional districts, and out of those regional districts, we found that the average, I believe, was $51, but it's in the report that it gave you as well.
Yeah. Was $51 a year to park all year?
I think so, yeah. Those districts also cannot charge.
Yep.
What's the process here? We're, I know we're not voting on it.
We're just discussing to advise. This is just a discussion to advise, because, you know, the pro of us supporting the reduction in parking fees is, you know, to Connor's points. The con is it is supporting the general fund, so then it will be up to us to figure out how we would raise the money that would be lost, or how we would instruct Dawn to cut the budget for where it would be lost, and where would that come out of? Because we're not going to be able to, like, as much as we would love to just direct bill all the taxpayers for you guys getting to park, we are under limits about, in terms of how much we can ask for from the taxpayers. So, you know, it's hard to tell an elderly lady that her taxes have to go up because more kids want to drive to school, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. But I do want to understand where the view of the committee is and what's on our mind.
How much of reduction are they, is the cost wanting to be $51 more in line? What is, what is the ask, I guess is my question.
So, I mean, obviously, $50 would be great, but we realize that that would be a very large reduction, and that would require a lot of money to make it up in the revenue, so we're really open to any reduction.
I just wondered what the ask was.
I mean, I know that a few years ago, the fee was $200, and then it was raised to $300 because-
I think it was $250.
$250.
Yeah. When we expanded the parking lot, coinciding with that, we increased the fee up to $300. By doing, increasing the parking lot, we actually eliminated the lottery for juniors, and so now everyone is available. There's, I don't think there's anyone who wants to park, who's excluded from parking since we did the expansion.
Yeah. Do we, do you know, Dawn, do we have anything in place for individual situations where there is a family hardship or an economic situation where we know that kids are driving to school because there's an absolute economic-
Yeah, Mr. Smith is always has that ability to make those decisions if families come forward to him.
Okay.
And we, I have seen in the past where we've had reduced or waived parking fees.
Yeah. And do we have temporary, you know, like, I know, we've had situations in my family where, like, one child has had a broken leg and couldn't get on the bus, and the other child would get permission to drive them, something like that. We allow that?
We do. I think if it's a medical issue, they're actually allowed to park in the staff lot.
Okay.
For proximity to the entrance.
Okay. Other questions?
I guess I'm just curious about how full the student lot is on a regular basis? Like, do you know roughly what percentage of spots are occupied?
It's like the vast majority are occupied. There's always some that are open in the back, but yeah.
Because I wonder if you reduce the price, if it would become such near capacity that it becomes hard to, or lottery, to, yeah, I mean-
Yeah, I don't think that that would be an issue. I don't know exactly how many parking spots are in the lot, but there are always spots open, so.
Yep.
Near springtime, when more sophomores are getting their license, there have been instances where the lot is overfilling, and students have to park outside of the parking lines, which can be a problem.
Okay. So we do have times where we hit capacity?
Yeah. I didn't think sophomores could park until the seniors graduated.
Yeah, they'll, they'll sneak in.
Okay. So it's, so the fact that we're getting cameras that will keep an eye on all the stuff going in the parking lot will maybe help with that. Yes.
Hi, also to add on to, like, people kind of like sneaking in, like, not everybody pays the $300 fee, which sometimes, as someone that does pay the $300 fee, seems a little bit unfair, and I know that it's not always checked, and so maybe having a reduction would maybe limit the amount of people that don't pay the parking fee.
I feel like I'm wondering if there's student volunteers that would volunteer to check stickers in the parking lot for a volunteer job. All right. Any other thoughts?
What are other research items that we need to do in order to make a kind of a well-rounded decision? I know we're not voting on that by decision.
I mean, it's really, I mean, whatever we want. I mean, for me, I am a little bit biased because I'm worried, I'm worried about overfilling the parking lot. I'm worried about, you know, so we have a parallel thing, which is sustainability, and I am a little worried that, like, you know, there's, you know, 800 kids in the school, and as soon as they all get their license, 400 of them are driving back and forth every day, and we're all driving, following each other to school, and our gas, and I feel like there's solutions that aren't necessarily everybody gets to drive for cheaper, but I'm also sensitive to the realities that, you know, when you do a practice or sports, it's kind of a pain in the neck to carpool and to organize carpool. So what I would want to know is some specific numbers on if we were to cut the parking fee, what would that look like, and maybe some suggestions from you guys on where we would cut the budget, and what would come out.
Yeah, sure. Yes, all right, and then-
That's okay.
I just think that personally, this is my opinion, I don't ask for sure, but I think that for most families, the cost of getting a car is probably greater than the $300 parking fee, so I don't think that the, reducing the fee will necessarily increase the number of students that are driving to school.
Right.
Well, because if we have a parking lot, we have spaces, that means we allow them to park there. Like, as far, I mean, if it fills up, it fills up, but that's-
Yeah.
You know?
Then you go back to the lottery.
Well, yeah, and I mean, I just, but to the, to the point of, you know, overfilling the parking lot, like, if we have spaces, we have spaces, like, intended to be used.
Yeah, I understand that, and also, you know, I feel, I feel a little uncomfortable because when we talk about, like, it's something that should be borne by the taxpayers. I feel like the taxpayers are responsible for your education. The taxpayers at large are responsible for getting you to school and getting you home, and they are responsible for the education that happens. I feel like asking them specifically to all pay for every kid to be able to drive their own car to school feels a little bit like the people benefiting from it aren't, like, part of the reason why taxpayers are paying for school is because, you know, it's for the better good. It benefits them because having educated people is like, we, so I don't know if I'm comfortable saying, like, we're just going to, like, take that out of our budget and put it onto the general budget.
But there are different ways. I mean, there's, there's working within our budget and making, you know, prioritizing within our existing budget.
Right, but does that mean taking out teaching and learning to pay for-
Well, we have to think about it, right? I mean, I'm not sure we've ever sat down and worked through what can, you know, where we can, I don't want to say cut corners, but where we can reduce things and where we, I don't know that yet until I see what we use it for.
Can I ask a question, Dawn? How, how much of the parking fees pay for parking-related stuff, and how much of them pay for, get rolled into the general fund?
So I think in any given year, it's probably not a whole lot, but I think we're sort of banking that money so that when we do do capital improvements, technically, we've already sort of, not that we've saved the money, but it's coming from, we've been able over the years to sort of substantiate that we're covering the cost.
Like, what did it cost us when we repaved the parking lot?
Just adding that one little island was like $45,000, $50,000.
Right. So like, remember, like, a few years ago, we repaved?
Did that, right.
Do you mean to remember what that was?
That parking lot specifically, I'd have to go back and look, but I think $75,000 to $80,000.
Okay. So like, if it's like 80, and we do that every-
Well, probably every, depends on, so we just resurfaced. The next time, we're going to have to, like, scarify, so it's a little bit more expensive.
I mean, one way we could go about this, if we want to think about it in terms of just maintaining the parking lot, it has to be sort of like an amortization, right? Because you're not doing that every year. It's like our driveway at home, you know? We're going to have to rip it up pretty soon, and it's going to be very expensive, but that's like once every 15 years. So, one thing we can do, you know, is to look at, like over the life of a parking lot, how much is it costing to maintain said parking lot? And then breaking that down into like an annual thing so that we can share with you, like this is the cost of like having a parking lot.
Because we have the plowing.
Right, right, the plowing, the, you know, all the things, right?
I'm just sorry, how many spots we have and how much money actually comes in each year from parking?
Yeah, so last year, I'm looking, we had forty, hold on. Yeah, forty-five thousand came in, so we were below budget last year. So, I think there's over three hundred spots out there, if I remember correctly. You know, the year we were COVID, we, the hybrid year, we actually waived fees that particular year. So, we didn't take any income in for that. It's more of a subsidy for the budget other than saying that it's paying to cover our parking. You know, just the same with our middle school and high school activity fees. What we collect does not pay what we expect. So, part of it's just, you know, how we build our budget. I would like to, if you guys like, would prefer to go look a little bit more at the regional school districts because you have King Philip listed here and it looks like it's like two fifty.
Yeah.
King Philip, right, so that's a regional, I'm just, I'm just not sure how you get to fifty-one dollars an average. If for regionals, if we're three hundred, they're two fifty, there's not that many regionals. To get it down to, they must be some regionals that are zero.
Yes, there are.
Yeah, okay. And if they offer parking, you know, there's so many different, it's not never apples to apples when you're looking at this.
Yeah.
You know, as I said in my prior comments, I think the democratic process is really important here. And I would like to see at the very least, I'd like an understanding of the costs that I'd like to be able to share with the students so they understand what's happening to their money and how we're using it. You know, and also, the other thing that factors in here is if you're talking about transportation, we provide bus service to everyone and it's free. And there are a lot of districts who charge for bus service. And so, we need to maybe factor that in as well. But I think it's really important for us to provide the information, whichever way we decide to go, so that everybody understands that the decisions being made, one way or the other, on a rational basis and that everyone's concerns are being listened to, okay? And that we appreciate that it's, you know, some of you have to pay for this yourselves and we get that and it's, and so I think that we owe that to our students who have done this work, to do our work and at least explain it.
I'm wondering, you know, rather than make a cut in a budget that we've maybe already started to build, is it reasonable for us to make, because I do want to, like, you guys did all this work and I would love it if you could go away feeling like, like we. Is it reasonable for us to say that we would like to ask that the fee be capped for a couple of years, a few years?
We don't usually increase it on a annual basis.
But could we ask, because like I feel you and if we, while we do this work to see if there's, you know, to be accountable to you guys, would you be okay if we say that like for the next three years, that probably would cover most of you, that we will agree to ask Dawn not to increase the fee at all for now?
But don't say that she doesn't mean we don't raise it every year anyway.
Right, but we're just saying we're not gonna raise it again. It's not much, I realize.
Or do we, you know, can we put this on the agenda in two months? Give us time to do more research on both ends?
Yeah, I think that's a fair idea.
Yeah, because even if we.
I mean, you have until March, but then March, you do approve your final budget and we would not want, we couldn't make any decisions after that the budget's already, if we haven't taken action, figured out the budget.
You know, I have to say, I don't, I don't know how I would come out on this because I appreciate both sides. But I think the process with regard to this is really important so that we, I just think that's really crucial. So, I would really be in favor of looking at this in the interim and then talking about it again.
Is it a huge time suck to do some research on costs? So, maybe can we put it on our?
Maybe just recently we caved, so I'll have all the data.
Can we put it on the agenda for next month? Because if we have to decide by March, if we revisit next month, we have some money, we have some sort of data behind it and then, you know, you can all come back or if you want to send representatives, we do like company.
And we can tell you what the costs are, but I will tell you the fee, I don't think was ever built upon necessarily cost. I was around when, I think as a parent, when they raised that fifty from two fifty to three hundred. But I know at the time, too, they were, had the expenditure to pay and that was actually all paid through the operating budget. And so that's, I think in a way, they were like, okay, so we're gonna pay that forty-five to fifty thousand. But to make it seem like we're doing it to give students more access, I think that was why they increased the parking fee to sort of see, to say that, yes, we are spending this money, but over time, we're gonna be collecting money against paying for it.
So, it's a good time to do an analysis of what does it actually cost to operate a parking lot, okay?
And it's a different idea, like with different, like, you know, what you proposed of, you know, putting a cap versus, you know, increasing the budget versus, you know, like all the different scenarios that could, you know, that we could think through and see what makes sense.
Yep, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and I'll just say, it's like, again, it's just one piece of the puzzle. When you look at fees that we charge families and what it actually costs us to provide the programs, it usually makes a small dent in.
Well, usually, I would say usually the fee is much less than the cost. And this is a situation where we don't know whether or not the fee covers the cost of maintaining a parking lot or is more. And to your point, and you didn't talk about it yet, but, you know, a lot of the other communities that you included are more walkable. And one of the things that's hard for us in the region is that we know that this is not the most walkable community. You know, even, I mean, kids who live in Farm Street and Donnelly, I think can reasonably walk home, but other than that, you're pretty stuck. So, I think to your point, I appreciate you guys coming and your points were well-made and thoughtful. And it's clear that the will of the students is definitely to reduce that fee. And we will come back to you next month with some more information about what it costs us to have the parking lot. Sound reasonable?
So, February seventh, same time, same place.
Thank you so much, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but we also understand that you have homework and it's okay and it will not bother us at all if you sneak out.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Did we have a student here from Student Council who's gonna do a monthly? Oh, that was you, okay, great, thank you so much.
Oh, you guys can leave the chairs.
You guys can leave the chairs. It's, I mean, you don't have to bring them back, you can put them back, but don't worry about it, thank you so much. All right, next item on our agenda is financial reports. No, superintendent's update.
I will be brief because I will have an opportunity to do a much more extensive update next Tuesday at our joint meeting. Just first, how proud I am of Connor and the Student Council for coming forward tonight and how nice it is to see student faces and hear student voice and just a reminder how important that is and all the decisions we make. So, Connor, thank you on your way out.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night. Good night. I'd also like to recognize a few things that happened in the past month. SpongeBob the Musical, fabulous. I was a little bit weary, to be honest, about SpongeBob when I saw that. But the music, the costumes, the dancing, phenomenal, as always.
And I was like, no, it's not a musical.
Mr. Lawrence put it in his, in his report, though. I know he and Ms. Sakalovsky, being new, we say, wait till you see these musicals. It's like Broadway quality. It's always like, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then you go and you're like, no, really, it is. I think they've both bought into that. So, thank you to the casting crew of SpongeBob and to Tracy and David for both working on Prosty Friday and the Turkey Trotts. They've done a lot of community building within the middle school. And I even know some reluctant middle schoolers who are not sure about this and went in reluctantly and came home and said it was a fabulous fun day. So, kudos to them. And I'd also like to recognize our band program for having the regional band concert just before the holidays. I unfortunately wasn't able to make it because I was ill, but I heard it was fabulous and again, is a great demonstration of the arts in our schools. A few updates, as you know, just before we came back after the holidays, I did send a recommendation to the school community recommending that people consider wearing masks when they return to the building. It was certainly a recommendation and not a mandate. As it turned out, probably in our elementary schools, we had roughly forty students who returned with masks and then that number decreased as you went up the grade level. So, parents and caregivers certainly saw it as a recommendation, not a mandate, and are doing what's best for them and their families, which is great. And looking at attendance rates, they have not been terrible. And before vacation, the numbers were far worse.
And staff, just a couple in each building, so, and it's not always illness, right? So, it's been really good.
So far, so good. Just an update on negotiations. As you know, for those of you who are on the Negotiations Subcommittee for the Educator's Contract, those conversations have started. And thanks to Dawn and her partnership, we've also started the conversations with our Custodial Association, our Food Service Association. Those conversations are underway and we will soon be starting up the Administrative Assistance and the Educational Assistance. So, we'll keep you posted as those conversations continue. Also, before the holidays, there was a lengthy email that went out saying, here are the notes and a quick video from Dr. Hoyt about the event on November sixteenth, the community event. So, anybody who wasn't there could see what was discussed and what Carlos presented. And we have three additional forums coming up on January twenty-fifth, February twenty-eighth, and January thirtieth. So, those are opportunities for anybody in the community to come.
March thirtieth, thank you.
Say, wait, you're doing backwards.
January twenty-fifth.
Apparently it's catchy, whatever's going to happen.
March thirtieth. So, more information will be coming up, both from central office and through the school newsletters about the topics that will be covered during those conversations. And we certainly hope that all voices will come to the table and engage in dialogue around how we can find a common path forward in supporting all of our students. Also in there was Dr. Hoyt's email address. He is always open and willing to chat with people on email or on the phone or on Zoom who have specific questions about DEI work and what the schools are intending to do moving forward. My entry plan survey, I sent one last reminder yesterday and my numbers have skyrocketed. So, that's what happens. It gets stuck in a newsletter and nobody reads it, but then you send it independently and everybody responds. So, I'm excited about that information coming in and I'll be giving you an update about my entry process next week. We have a new data manager on campus. We're welcoming Karen Gibbs. Our data manager is someone who works behind the scene with the Aspen Information System and supports all four buildings in getting student information in there, faculty information in there, and then doing all of our reporting to the state, which is an ongoing basis throughout the year. So, just wanted to mention that we have a new member of our team who works very closely with Anthony Rataco, our Director of Technology and our principals. Another new member of our faculty, extended faculty, is Officer West of the Dover, I mean, of Sherburne Police Department. He is their new therapy dog, who is finding his way into the hearts of every three K through twelve Dover and Sherburne child because he visits the school quite regularly.
I'm sorry, I just have to say, this is a little sad commentary on my life, but if you are friends with the Sherburne Police on Instagram, the videos they post of him are like, I think they're spending every lunch hour, they have a mini cruiser for him, it's like the best thing.
So, he sits in it and it has the alarms and everything, the sirens, yeah.
So, follow Officer West on Instagram, please, and to all of your social media channels.
Yes, and Officer West does have a mailbox at Pine Hill School and a bed that when you say, "West, Matt," he goes straight to the bed in the library and he checks his mail.
Good to know.
Goalie has some competition in the district now. All right, and lastly, just to advertise some upcoming events, tomorrow, Thursday night, is our Song Fest, which is kind of neat. It's gonna be an opportunity for our elementary, middle, and high school kids to all be singing independently and sing others, super fun. That's six thirty in Mudge Auditorium. Depending on who you ask, this isn't great news, but midterms are right after MLK, so the Tuesday through Saturday, or Tuesday through Friday of next week. Again, in the spirit of challenge success, there's been some adjustments that Mr. Smith mentioned in his report. So, that's a step in the right direction. And lastly, Chocolate Cafe on February fifth, for anybody who's looking for a pre-Valentine's Day sweet. You can kind of listen to some of this.
Good work. This is the Chocolate Cafe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the data manager job a new position or is this, is somebody new taking on a position we've had?
So, if you read your financial reports, you mentioned that the position had been vacant.
I did notice that, I just was like clarifying for the company.
So, it was vacant for a little while. I didn't know if you remember Mary Bronski, that name. She was our data manager for so long. She came in and filled in for us and is actually mentoring Karen to get her up to speed on Aspen.
Well, thank you to her.
Exactly.
Please pass along our gratefulness.
Yep, I think she was happy to be back and she's loved retirement, though, and hasn't regretted a day of it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry, but just about the January, February, and March meetings, community meetings that are coming up, are they also at the Connor Center or do we not know the places?
Excellent question. DSAID has kind of taken on the responsibility this year of organizing these events. And Kate, I don't know, if you want to chime in?
Yeah, so, we are in the process of finalizing. They will most likely be some at the Sherburne Community Center and some at the Dover Church in their craft hall. They each are at six thirty and I hope to finalize the locations in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Laying a bit of phone tag with some people.
And we'll do the same. We will send out notes after the fact and kind of a highlight video for those who aren't able to make it. And Dr. Hoyt's also offering a parenting for inclusivity group that'll meet monthly and it's gonna be virtual so that everyone can access the meeting so long as they're available on the same day, same time. But that's, he's collecting that information for people who are interested, trying to find the date and time that the majority of the people can come together. And if there's enough people for two cohorts of parenting groups, he'll do two on different days and different times.
Or moving daytime, evening, email work, he's thinking through all that, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now it's Dawn.
Just quickly, you have your approved warrant report. It was just for the month of December, so that's what Mark has to look forward to. On my monthly report, for your financials as of December thirty-first, you have your revenue expenditures and then a quarterly for your special revenue and revolving. The only goal that we have in sort of the revenue expenditure arena is about the district-wide information management person being hired and that now has been encumbered, reencumbered back into your financials. And we've also been successful in hiring at least one new custodian. That person will start on Tuesday, so that has been encumbered. And so now we're just have one vacancy here at the region and we're starting to get a little more bites that are add, so we're happy about that. So, that is promising news and it's promising news. I don't have any negative other comments to tell you about the financials. On the special revenue and revolving funds, I just wanted to highlight the fact that we finally used the Dowd Family baseball donation that had been sort of restricted for dugouts. I think our greater need at this point for the varsity baseball program was an outfield fence. It got really embarrassing at times to see that temporary one just falling down and it was a disaster. So, we were able to get a vendor in in the spring who gave us a quote and was able to get the field installed. It looks fabulous. When they start the baseball season, they will do a little plaque dedication and will include the Dowd Family because that was in recognition of a former student who went here. And they just wanted something to be done here on campus in relation to baseball. So, they were more than happy to have the monies diverted to that. So, that, we had been sitting, or having that money in our account, as you know, I think since about 2011. So, I think they were thrilled that it was finally being spent and Coach Ryan was thrilled that we were able to put something in that will be there. So, we're looking forward to that plaque dedication when we start baseball in the spring. Any other questions on anything on where we are now? We don't really have anything new to share for looking forward to fiscal year twenty-four. I would say in all realms, as you know, we have a new governor that was just inaugurated, which slows down the whole state budgeting process. The healthcare board meeting to set rates has not actually been confirmed yet, but we're not looking until the week of February, I think it's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. So, I'm hoping to at least have it before you have your joint meeting with Dover Warren and Sherburne Advisory so we know what direction healthcare is gonna take. But I think everything, for some reason, just backed up and slowed down. So, we'll be really crunched probably when it comes to March. But, you know, as long as we have all the pieces of the information, of the puzzle to put together, we'll be able to take care of it. But that's, I don't have any new news for you on the operating budget for fiscal year twenty-four. twenty-four this evening. Moving to what I do have for fiscal year twenty-four, though, and that is capital. So I did print a large printout for everyone, if you want to, in your budget book. And so we'll take time just to sort of walk through, and as I said in my cover, then I'll just give you a little bit of the strategy that we've been working with. So as you know, our large project this summer were the rooftops at the middle school and Linkwith Commons. Those were the two, and the middle school gym. Those were the three places where we actually were having the most issues, water damage related, from our existing rooftops. But when we had the consultant come out to start that whole project for us now, it's probably been three years ago, we had them uncover all of our buildings, because they're all approximately about the same age. But what we're realizing is that we have some latitude to push out some of our other buildings, because as you know, when you look at your five-year plan from last year, what was on twenty-four was the high school rooftop. We have sat down and sort of strategized differently about that, because the other thing that's on the high school rooftop is a large amount of HVAC air handlers, equipment. So having experience here where we don't have that much equipment, but we still have some, you understand the importance of getting your landscape put together before you do the refurbishment, which we did, the restoration versus the replacement. Because as sound as you can have your roof before you do the restoration, the better off you are. And it was already on our plan to replace all seven air handler units on the high school in these coming years, anyway. So we flipped the page a little bit, and we're going to take care of all the HVAC equipment on top of the high school roof before we do the roof restoration. Based on that, we've pushed it out, actually the roof replacement till fiscal year twenty-six. We pushed it out two years, and we brought forward all the air handler units that we had spread out over multiple years, because in talking to our engineers, it's more efficient and effective to go ahead and just replace them all at the same time. So we have, we did do a engineering consulting study on our equipment on there, on the rooftop, whether or not they thought we needed to replace it, and they do a cost estimate for you. They agree that it's all past its useful life. It should be replaced, not only for mechanical issues, but also because we're not in compliance with sort of the energy savings initiatives that are out there now, and new equipment would do that for us. So there's also going to be some savings in energy. They gave us a cost estimate of like a million one. That is upgrading us to all current code compliance, the project management, and the equipment. Now, that is their cost estimate based on what they knew at the time. Our next step is we're, they're giving us a proposal to do the actual bidding process and project management, so we'll try to get this out to bid, probably within the next six weeks or so, and get a more firmer number for you. But I think they, this is actually really good, because it includes everything. We can always scale back if we run into any financial problems. We can also add more money if it comes to be a little bit over. And so that's pricing out at a million one. It is greater than the numbers we had even spread out over the couple of years, mainly because we found, for the first time, a flaw in our onsite insight report, that when they redid this section of the report, remember we did an upgrade, or an upgraded redo in 2017 from the 2012, it looks to be that they mispriced just this one section of rooftop units, because if I go back to our 2012 report, the numbers were twice the amount that were in the 2017. So I don't know exactly why they changed those numbers. There are so many numbers that change in that, that we would not have found that on our own. But we were trying to reconcile why the engineer's study was so much more than what was in the report, which what led me to believe to go back to the old report and see that we had just probably an input error for that section. So it is higher than we thought, what we've been carrying over the last couple of years, but the million one that you have is an engineer-based estimate. The second thing that we're looking to do for fiscal year twenty-four is to continue floor work in the high school. What we're looking to do is both the hallways and all classrooms in the math wing. That's going to get us almost close to having, to having refloored the whole high school. And so rather than breaking that up into two summers, we actually see a lot of benefit to doing it all at once. The amount of time that you save and the cost you save for not having to strip and wax the VCT tiles is totally worth it. And if we're going to be moving furniture all around, our contractor can get it done in a summer. This is comparable to a whole hallway of classrooms that we did a chick ring this past summer. They got it done. So we are recommending that we just do so, all of that in one year, and that cost right now, based on a state contract, is a hundred and twenty thousand. We are also looking at upgrading the two student bathrooms in Linkwist. I know they're former members. Ann Hovey used to always be on me about those bathrooms.
Extremely gross.
Exactly. So we are bringing those forward to do a repair and replacement. The biggest expense in there is the tile and the floors. We're going to be able to reuse the partitions, but we plan on doing all-new fixtures. And we also plan on using some of the work that our students did on our Sustainability Task Force about what you can put into a bathroom for sustainability, energy savings. So we'll be looking to do the hand dryers, the sinks, motionless sinks to conserve water. We don't plan on doing anything different with the toilets. They're already pretty efficient, and you've got to be careful about public places, about having too low of a flush situation. But we're excited to sort of upgrade those, renovate them. They are pretty sad. And so we, that may be one price, though, that will change over time. We're still getting quotes from general contractors as to what that cost will be, but we're holding a thirty thousand dollar placement for each bathroom right now. I'm hoping I'll be able to come back and tell you it'll be a little bit lower, but I wanted to come out higher rather than lower. And the last thing we have, as you know, every year or two, we put a project on that's recommended by Weston Sampson, who's our contract service provider for our wastewater treatment plant. And so typically, those costs in the range of twenty-five thousand. We reached out to them to see what they are suggesting that we take care of, but we're getting close to that. I will say, that's getting close to twenty years old, the wastewater treatment plant. So you may start seeing some larger projects that we need to do with that. They're actually going to have their engineers do more of a long-range capital analysis for us, given that we are at our twenty-year point, so we'll have a better feel. But at the same time, there's things outside, like the chemical testing center, wiring things differently, that keeps us constantly maintaining the efficiency and the effectiveness of that operation. We did not do one last year, so we are definitely due to do one in twenty-four. So with that, we're looking at an ask in fiscal year twenty-four of a million three. What we, what I don't have a good sense of right now, and we should have it more in February, is what of this million three that the region can take on for use of BUD or surplus funds that we might have coming from the budget this year, and what we'll be asking the town for. So right now, we're taking the one-three forward to the two-town capital committees, but our hope is that we can take on some of those smaller projects, and like we did last year, just probably take the larger project forward to be funded by the two towns. We then sort of look at our four, the four additional years out, because we always look at a five-year capital plan. Luckily, in twenty-eighth, there's nothing left. Which is to the point of why I think we're going to try to smooth this out as much as we can. Twenty-five is heavy right now, but until we dig into some of these projects and see where they land, we're just putting everything where it needs to be. And as you know, we use it as a roadmap, and then we try to figure out what we need to do. The turf field track fencing combo is something that we are immediately working on, as we just talked about with the students here regarding the bleachers, but we also want to get a better handle. This is a number that's in onsite insight from 2017. It may or not be where we need to be. I think there's going to be some greater discussion about sort of the replacement of the turf, whether or not turf is still how we should go, or if we should go back to looking at natural grass. I will say, speaking to our head groundskeeper, a lot of department schools are going back to the natural fields. And so I think we want to know, start on this sooner rather than later, so we have time to make the appropriate decisions, and obviously, working with all the parties involved, boosters, you know, the athletic department, to make sure we make the right decision. But I think we're at a juncture in time where I don't think it's an automatic that we'd say we've replaced turf. I think we should really look into it. And so within the next week or so, we're hoping to have, again, the first person out here to do a site visit with us to encompass all four of those projects.
Are they, are the private schools going to natural grass for cost reasons or for athlete health reasons?
I think it's a combination. Yeah, I do think some of it's safety, though.
Yeah, safety's, oh.
Environmental, safety. Well, they're perfecting like the turf of fields that are a little bit more environmental. But I think it's also a safety for athletes. And I think the downside will be, and this is probably where we hear from the athletes, is that you lose that opportunity like in March, when we can practice because you have the turf. But we were talking about if we, the other thing we're working on is, we actually have a meeting on Friday to, with the last group who did a feasibility field study here that included the tennis courts, because we have that on our radar, too. And when we know what we're happening with the tennis courts, there's an opportunity to put another grass field where the old tennis courts are. So if you start that rotation process, you'll have more fields, they'll be in better shape. And then you just have to think about what happens in that couple of weeks where the weather's not conducive to practicing on grass. But if that's just a small trade-off, then I think we just have to see where we go on that. There is obviously more annual operating cost to a natural grass field, but less capital investment. But I think that's what we just want to understand more. So we're already starting to work on twenty-five to see where we're going to land, because I've learned now, you actually need to be about two years ahead on capital, to see where we sort of stand on this. And again, we have the same thing where we have HVAC equipment on Linkwist, we have boilers in the middle school, so we will engage our engineers. We spend less than five thousand to have these engineering studies, and I will tell you, they are so valuable for us to have. It's a basis for our bidding process. It really gives us a feel of what we need to do and what the current costs are. So we will have them engage with us on all these other projects, see where we are. They'll give us an estimate of how much life we have left in the pieces of equipment, and we will try to smooth out twenty-five and twenty-six through twenty-seven and twenty-eight, where we don't have as much. So that is our hope and our plan on capital.
So the turf field track and fencing number at one point three eight, is that inclusive of bleachers or that, no? So where does bleachers fit here?
So the bleachers would be something that we probably would, as you, well, because we don't have a number yet, but we probably would go and look for funding in all different places.
Would it involve any capital or no?
Well, it would be, it could be capital, but it might not be capital that we asked town for.
Okay. I just, I am just feeling the weight of the urgency of that issue.
Right.
With, you know, time and, you know. I want the math department to get new linoleum, but I really want the kids who can't get in the bleachers to get.
But it's not, it's not one.
I know, I know. But, you know, I mean, there's one pot, right? And I just, I'm, that's just a me thing, but I just.
Well, I think to your point, I think there is a lot of groups who will be willing to contribute to the bleachers. We have a, you know, we've built up our athletic revolving fund a little bit over the years. We've got, you know, some money here and there. So I think that we can pull that together without it being a capital ask on our capital budget. That's what, that's what we're hoping. But if not, we still have time to add it. If we get a number that we're like, oh my gosh, I don't think that we're going to be able to handle that on, like, you know, pulling from multiple different areas. But I think that's our initial thought process.
Okay. Other questions on the capital plan?
Just a quick one. And this is something that I don't know much about, but you mentioned that the water treatment system is close to twenty years old. Will there be room for, I assume there are new technologies, more maybe, like, we were talking about the bathrooms and the cafeteria being more environmentally friendly. Are there things that we're going to be able to put into that that will be more, I'm not being very articulate?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's, you know, it's our septic.
Yeah.
You're right. So I don't know if there's been, I think septic is still septic, in a way. So I think that I, you know, and that's, we're overseen by the Department of Environmental Protection for that. It's monthly tested. I mean, it's pretty, you know, we spend probably fifty or sixty thousand annually just to maintain the septic. So I know there's people who say we should have probably just tied into Medfield if we, if we could have, just like we did water.
Oh, yeah.
And like we did gas. I wasn't around at that point, so I don't really know why, but that is, you know, it's an expense that we incur, and it is an investment. I think it's, you know, was, I want to say like an eight-hundred thousand dollar project back in the day. So we have a great company who services, they're here daily. They, that's all they do, Weston Sampson. So like I said, their engineers are going to give us more of a long-term capital outlook for the wastewater treatment plant that we'll have to sort of build on and understand, and if there's any better ways to do it out there, they're the ones who are probably going to tell us. So it's definitely something that we know we need to start looking at probably past twenty-eight, but, well, we already have our radar up on that.
Thanks. And where does the, I forget what we call, what it's called, but that sort of, you know, look into the future of what, you know, what we're going to need space-wise, building-wise? Like, how does that fit into this timeframe?
So that's premature to fit into this, because we haven't had the study done yet. But in the next month or so, we'll be kicking that study off. We're just trying to pace our workload. And so they'll be coming through and hopefully giving us ways to repurpose or in some spaces. But I think there's always talk about, is there anything we can do with the courtyard space? That, you know, that landscape or that, you know, area over there where they're sort of open, so that'll be things that we might see. But in that report, we'll be, they'll start laying out initial cost plans for any significant renovation that they would want us to do, and then we'd have to incorporate that. It wouldn't be anything that we would be putting in twenty-four at this point in time, so we'd have time to react for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, if there's larger projects that they are recommending that we could do.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, because I figure if we have twenty-eight on the page, at some point, we can bake it in.
Right, exactly. Or move, smooth, right, smooth some of this out. So that will be something that we will be incorporating into our capital plan, once we have the report and see what they suggest.
Yeah. And then another question that just dawned on me, are there any other areas in, on our campus that are ADA grandfathered? Meaning, are there other places that we should be factoring into our plan that may require some significant renovation?
So we've done quite a bit. If you go back, I mean, since I've been here, even when Bill McCalldo was here, it's when we started, we added all the ADA compliance doors. That was a capital project that was partially capital, partially we used the superintendent reserve fund and operating funds to speed that along. And we've made additions or enhancements to bathrooms as we've had students come through. So the main, the main thing were the doors, like not having, able to get into Linkwist High School, Middle School. So those have all been taken care of. And we've ordered equipment that we've needed in schools for any students. I mean, we've had multiple students. So we tend to move, we tend to take care of things when the instance arrives, but I don't think there's anything glaring that we haven't done from an ADA compliance standpoint. I don't think there's anything glaring that we haven't done from an ADA compliance standpoint.
Because I'm wondering if we ought to be more proactive, because when the situation comes up, it's already too late. Like, we've already imposed the harm.
But I will, I will, but I will tell you, you know, having been involved in sort of what we have put in place, it's been student-specific. What we've had to do, like, I mean, we've, we've done some renovations at Chickering that were specifically for the student versus a normal renovate, an ADA, a normal ADA compliant renovation would not have taken care of some of the, of how we needed to do it.
Beyond.
So, right, exactly. So we do tend to like, but we react and we take care of it immediately for, for those kind of situations.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense. And I, I mean, and that's, that's.
Because you can't anticipate everything, and we do, we do tend to customize.
Yeah. But I just, I just think we should think about being voluntarily compliant with ADA requirements beyond, not be, I'm just talking about the baseline on things that we are grandfathered in for. Like, we should, I feel like we should at a minimum be able to say that we are ADA compliant even in the areas where we are grandfathered out of. Like affirmatively, as opposed to waiting until something happens. I mean, you know, ADA plus is even better, and I know that's where our hearts are, where our intentions are and what we do.
Our biggest amiss were the doors back in the day, the fact that you were not able to open our doors from a compliance, from an ADA compliance standpoint. So that was huge that over two years, we took care of every door on the region's campus.
One of the, sorry. One of the things that came up through the D E I audit and unpacking all the recommendations with the different faculties was the fact that Easter seals will come out and do an ADA compliance kind of audit and look at everything. So we talked about timing that into the cycle of after the space audit, doing the ADA audit, just to be proactive, which is like you said, the baseline.
Yep.
You know, and of course, we'll specify for certain students as they come up through and might need more indifferent than that, but that at least gets basics done.
And I think particular, and you know, obviously, just the bleachers is a particular, a particularly public thing, but just having gone to a lot of other schools where people in wheelchairs can access, I think that's also, over the last, you know, decade, we've brought a lot more students back to the district that maybe historically would have gone to other schools. And as we're doing this thing, which is the right thing to do, and also encouraging people who are differently able to be part of DS, you know, the actual school, I, I just like to be ready for that so that they can be part of everything that we do.
Yeah, I, I, I completely agree. And I'm reminded of the piece in the, in the equity audit that said, "Our community wants us to be bold," in a sense. And so I, I think it's a really important thing that we ought to look at proactively.
And I also think there's a difference between compliance and inclusivity.
Right.
There's compliance if there's somewhere for someone with a different ability to go, whereas inclusivity is they're right along with their peers and friends.
Right. Other questions, other topics? I have like a very particular, what's the difference between the Altro quartz tiles and the L V T that we've been using? I just, curious.
So what we have here in the middle school is the Altro, is the Altro quartz.
Okay.
So if you go into Lenquist Common, that's the L V T.
What's the difference between the two products?
There's not a whole lot of difference, it's more appearance.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all. They're like apples to apples in terms of cost.
They're like apples to apples, they're in a, right, they're interchangeable. It's the style and the colors that we're able to, to move forward with. So, so our, 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 sort of our plan, not our plan, but how things have worked out is the high school is going to be our real trial, because the English Social Studies wing is L V T. We're making the other side Altro quartz. This school is all Altro quartz. Chickering's been all Altro quartz, and Pine Hill is L V T.
So we'll have a little, like.
So we're going to be a case study to see which one wears longer.
Yes. Okay, I have one last question about this capital plan, which it might be a little sticky. Just, has anyone given any thought to students who are gender non-conforming using Lenquist bathrooms? Do we have a place for students to go? Like, we're renovating those bathrooms, and I'm assuming there'll be a boys' room and a girls' room. What are we doing about students who need to go to the bathroom?
So in that particular building, because in the other buildings, we have single sex restrooms that have been turned into transgender. There is.
Just all gender.
All gender.
Okay.
All gender, yeah. There, there are very small bathrooms over there, so that we would not be able to do anything in that particular space.
It wouldn't be, I mean, you've got two toilets in there now, right?
Yeah.
Is it, is it really horrible to make them one toilet and make them all gender? Like, is there that many people in line to use the bathroom?
Yeah.
Probably. Those are cafeteria, restaurant, so. And we, on a typical basis, those are the ones I have access to, not the two in the front that we consider our, our public bathrooms that are typically only used for occasions where.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out if I am a gender non-conforming person, where I go pee when I am in band in lunch.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I drink the water, now I got to pee.
Right, right. So that's, yeah, I'd have to think if there's a bathroom over, yeah.
Isn't there? Like, back behind the kitchen.
That's where, that's where we're doing.
Those are the ones we're doing.
Yeah.
And not the public ones.
Not the front ones.
Not the front ones. I don't think I've ever been in those bathrooms.
Yeah.
They're kind of yucky. You don't want to go there.
But that is our, that's where students go during lunch.
Not the front ones?
They can't go to the front ones?
Yeah, the front ones are usually really only accessible. We started opening those up during COVID just to spread people out, but typically, those are more for when we have events and lunch.
So why?
So, yes, I'm wondering.
Why can't we use those and then make a, you know?
Yeah, they're, they're actually, they're, they're, they're art, they're different bathrooms, because I think they are sort of made for, not a school bathroom, but a public-type bathroom. They totally, they look different than our other bathrooms. But they're not, they're fine right now, so that's why we're attacking the ones that are just really.
I guess I'm curious, like, are the guests, the, like, I mean, I'm like that in my house, too, right? I have my company bathroom and then like, but is the company bathroom that much higher quality that the students couldn't use the company bathroom and get it cleaned up enough in the public, like?
A lot of it, a little bit's oversight, too, like supervision. We, when we were having it open, we were having issues, I'll be honest.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it's, 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 it's not in, it's not in the vicinity of where there's the adult supervision happening, and we were having some, some issues. So it was open during COVID, but we made the decision to go back to where it's not. It still could be open during high school. I think they have keys to unlock it if they have capacity issues from the high school, because the high school lunches are larger than our, our middle school lunches.
So then, I guess I just would ask respectfully that you visit the question of if I am a student who's gender non, like a non-binary student, how do I go to the bathroom in a way that's not embarrassing? Okay.
Good point, thank you.
No problem.
So I am requesting action being taken tonight. Just so you know, it's sort of lately, a late quest, but the Board of Select, the Board of Select, no, no, yeah, the Board of Select, the Select Board, can't call it that.
The Board of Select people.
Yeah. The Select Board in Charbonne is actually having a five-hour budget meeting on Saturday. And one of the items later in the afternoon is just the capital from the schools. So I'm sort of slated to just briefly go over the capital at Pine Hill and this capital for the Select Board. They're sort of getting, they're trying to look at the bigger picture, so they're doing this ahead of like going to the capital committee. But just, they know that we're approving this tonight and that it would be available for them to, to look at. I just wanted to make sure the committee knows that that's preliminary budget discussion is taking place.
So we're taking action on approving the FY '24 capital plan?
Exactly.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '24 capital plan as shared in this report tonight? Motion made by Lynn Collins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kate Potter. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Right. And this is your version one, so we have until, you know, I try to get this one done before the middle of February, so the towns have their numbers, but we're continuing to work on tweaking one or two of these things, so it could be, potentially be bringing some new numbers to you at your second meeting in February. I doubt I'll have any by the time your first meeting, but your second meeting in February.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is security camera proposal.
Sure. So as you know, security of our students and staff remains a top priority. In 2018, we had worked with Synergy Solutions to do a security audit of all three campuses and have since been working with Dawn and Sean's help and Anthony's, too, taking their recommendations and putting them in place around the FOB systems and being able to go in and out of the buildings through the dozen system in the main office, as well as a number of things that you might not see to the naked eye that are important to keeping our students and staff safe. So the basics have been done, and we are now at the point where having piloted a camera that is overseeing part of the student parking lot right now and realizing that it is not only a deterrent to sometimes bad choices, but also can cut down the administrative time associated with chasing down bad choices, it's something that we want to consider for the rest of the regional campus, both as a deterrent and for follow-up afterwards. And so Anthony Rataco had, Vercarda came, come out and do kind of a, an audit of our regional campus and came up with a proposal for 25 cameras that would cover our spaces. We met with John Smith, David Lawrence, talked about kind of the need for it and what their recommendations and hopes and dreams would be, and we landed at the number of 25 cameras. So at this point, we're proposing to you that you consider voting to approve a cost of $45,321 for installation of these cameras at the region. And as noted in the memo, there was no quote attached because we included it in the memo. I apologize for that typo. It will cost roughly $4,200 a year just for the licensing, but I think it is an important step in the right direction. In many districts, they're beyond the external cameras and already have cameras inside their buildings, and we're just catching up with cameras outside the buildings. And I definitely think that our, our building leaders will attest to the fact that they are powerful and helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion questions?
I just had a question for our policy committee. It says camera oversight and usage will be governed by the school committee policy operational protocols set forth by administration. Do we already have a camera policy?
We.
So that's under second read next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just was wondering what, do we take turns watching the video?
Sorry. Sign up. Get tired.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, that makes sense.
So you'll revisit the, the policy that's on the table next week to hopefully approve for the second read. And then there's going to be internal kind of managerial and operational policies that we keep track of, you know, as terms of the building leaders having access, the director of technology, if and when our school resource officers can access that footage, but those things will be internal.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the one-time cost for purchase and installation of outdoor security cameras for $45,321, understanding that there's an annual licensing fee of $4,200 for purchase of security cameras at the region?
Mark Keely, so moved.
Motion made by Mark Keely. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Judy. Judy Miller, any discussion?
I should have asked, where is the money coming from?
So we're going to put forward with your, with the approval of the project tonight, that you want to move forward with it, we're going to put forward a budget amendment to our Esser grant.
Oh, that's what it says here, yes.
Yeah.
It says it right there.
Yeah. And if, and if we're there, you know, the vendor says they've done, all their clients are using the Esser. To me, I'm trying to figure how that works, but that's side point. It's safety, right? So our plan is to put forward, it's a sort of a, recognizes a capital, which you have to go through additional steps to be able to use your Esser money for capital. So with your approval tonight, then we'll start the process of putting together a budget amendment to be approved by DESI. And once we get that approval, if for some reason we don't get that approval, that's where I said there's other funding sources, or we may be able to like split it and do part in our operating and part from another funding source. But we're, our goal is to get it done as soon as we can.
All right. That's why you have the discussion after the two things. I usually forget it, but that's all right. All in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Thank you. I'm always a fan of things that deter poor life decisions. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. There's four items on it. I will speak firstly to the town report for Dover. As you may know, Dover asks for a town report to go into what used to be their town report book, must-see reading for all of the residents of Dover. Now that is primarily online, unless people would like to go to Town Hall to get it. I thank those of you who read the draft and gave me some nice editorial-like commas places and other sort of like things that would be embarrassing to send out into the book, and also some clarifications. Angie Johnson is serving a one-year term. We have 1,153 students here, and there was one omission from the retirements, Tricia Smith. We obviously wish her well, and I think that was, that was it. So with your permission and those changes, we'll include that as part of the consent agenda. Are there any other questions for items of the consent agenda? Minutes, donations, or grants? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Lynn Collins, so moved. Do I have a second?
Angie Johnson, second.
Angie Johnson, any discussion? All in favor?
Where's the money coming from?
All opposed. Motion passes six-zero. Item nine, communications from both Principal Smith and Principal Lawrence. Just, I, I just want to say, to pass on to them, I really enjoy reading their updates. And I know it takes a lot of time to write them, but it's a nice window for us to see what's going on, and it's clear that there's a lot of really good, positive things happening at both schools. So thank you, I liked reading about Frosty Friday. That was great.
And today was really pertinent, because I'd forgotten tomorrow's early release day, so thanks to both of them for that.
Great, tomorrow's an early release day, everyone, for all of you watching at home. They're coming home early. All right, any items for the February 7th meeting? I know we're going to revisit the issue of parking, and if there are other items that you would like to see on the agenda, please reach out, and I will see if we can get that happening. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judy. All in favor? Fantastic. Meeting adjourned at 8:00 P. M.